I'd like to call the order, the meeting of the village board for June twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen. Could you please join us for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Village clerk, would you please call the roll?
President DeSimone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Franz?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's six, we have a crime.
At this, Evan, are we gonna do the public hearing first, then move the proclamation up?
Um, no, let's get the proclamation out.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to have a motion for us to move the proclamation of special recognition to the Beyond Dreams Teen Club in Bensonville. I wanna move that forward, so we can get all these fine, young, upstanding people out of here, so they don't have to be bored. So may I have a motion to move the proclamation ahead of everything else?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, so at this time, we, uh, let me find it here. I'm gonna read the proclamation real quick. So the proclamation is a special recognition of the Beyond Dreams Teen Club. Whereas the village of Bensonville wishes to acknowledge and recognize the Beyond Dreams Teen Club, and whereas the local club, which primarily resides within the Elm Court Apartments, has been continually growing in size and commitment, and whereas the mission of the club is to organize positive activities and programs with their peers in the community, as well as do service projects to give back to the community. We love our community and want the best for it. And whereas the current Beyond Dreams Club members, which we'll read them in one second, will be recognized here today. Whereas the club has been working and volunteering in the community since two thousand and sixteen, and has set future goals of going to Washington DC next year to participate in the National Service Projects fundraiser. Now, therefore, I, village president Frank DeSimone, together with the Board of Trustees, do officially recognize the Beyond Dreams Teen Club for positive community involvement and promotion of healthy teen lifestyles, and wish them luck in their future endeavors, presented this day, June twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen. Now, is there a motion to support this proclamation?
You have a motion?
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Can I have the roll call, please?
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
The motion carries and the proclamation has now been granted. So could you please join me? And we're gonna give everybody their proclamation, you guys can clap.
Uh, leader?
Go the other way?
Yeah, absolutely.
May I ask, um, Joey, please come in. He's also the youth leader and he's leading the group, as well as myself, and also not. So we're gonna read it together.
So if you just call him, we'll hand him their proclamation.
Sure.
Giselle Milley Castillo Palacios.
Edgar Gonzalez Guzman.
Mari Carmen Rios Moreno.
Amy Von Guzzaro Cruz. So Amy, I can't see. Betzabi Martinez Chavez.
Her dad, she's in Guatemala, so her father is picking up for her. Emily Benitez.
Clarissa Fernanda Castillo Palacios.
Maria Neri Diego.
Christian Tomas Guzzaro Cruz.
John David Cruz.
She's also not here.
Kay, I'm sorry.
We can recognize her.
Well, let's talk. Kate Castillo Lugardo and Christopher Anthony Martinez are not here today, but they are also part of the youth group.
For proclamation? So can you all come on and help, join us for a picture, real quick? And make sure we'll go in the middle?
Sure.
Terrence too, come on, Terrence. Yeah. Wherever you want me to be. I'm here with you. We can go for back. I won't bite, I promise. We might have to get closer, because we don't think we're gonna get all of the wood in. So you wanna come in the front here? Yeah, I'm gonna get a couple of my stuff. Okay, ready? One, two, three, one more, one, two, three. Thank you, everybody, very much. Thank you very much. You guys, you guys can go, you don't have to hang out, I promise.
Thank you, guys, everybody, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We're in the wrong town here. Not done yet.
Thank you very much. This is not doing this now.
Wow, it emptied out.
We're a public, oh yeah. Public hearing presentation, uh, to pitch a presentation.
At this time, we're gonna move on to public hearing and presentation, and we have a presentation from the DuPage Convention Visitors Bureau.
Frank, your mic on? Yeah, I wanna welcome Beth. She is the executive director of the DuPage Conventions and Visitors Bureau. So it's one of our partner organizations that we work with on a regular basis. And she's got a quick presentation for us to go over what they've been up to. So Beth?
Thank you very much, Evan. I can clear a room. Do I just, uh, does it go on from here?
Oh no, we need to switch it over first.
I heard the word "quick" from Evan, so I will be short and brief. Thank you, everyone, for allowing me an opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Beth Marquetti again. I am the executive director of the DuPage Convention Bureau. I've been at the Bureau for over eighteen years, and the director for the past three. So it's a true privilege and honor to have one of our wonderful communities, Bensonville, be a proud partner with us. Do I have to point toward the computer, maybe? There we go. So we are the certified bureau representing the entire county, all thirty-eight communities. What that means is, of the six percent hotel, state hotel tax that every hotel room collects, we get a portion of it back on the local level to help promote our communities. So we are the certified bureau receiving state grant funding. It's a public-private partnership, which is why we're so grateful for the contribution of our communities, because it does have to be matched. It's a matching grant from the state. We, if you boil down what we really do, it's sales and marketing. I'm gonna give you just a really, really quick little preview of kind of the things that we've been able to accomplish over the last couple months and in the last year, and we're entering into our new fiscal year as well. So we're gonna start with sales. So we have a team of four people on our sales team. They are required to go out and to find new pieces of business for our sports facilities. Hello, Todd. Our hotels, any of our conference facilities. They attend over twenty trade shows a year of meeting planners or sports rights holders. So those people travel, and they're trying to find business to bring to DuPage County. They bring leads to our hotel partners, as well as our sports venues. And in fact, over the last couple months, because we had such an surge of hospitals coming into DuPage County and different medical groups, we've been attending pharmaceutical trade shows as well. So this past six months, we've been attending two medical pharmaceutical trade shows. And with the passing of Billy Graham, we have a dedicated person who goes after the religious market, and so attended the Religious Conference Management Association meeting this year. Had a lot of phone calls about Billy Graham, people that are wanting to kind of follow him. Here's a quick little preview of our sales team. Each of them have a specific market. We have corporate association, religious, military, fraternal, all, and then of course, sports. And then we have a service person who helps, like, find tents when we need certain tents for certain groups, or just need some restaurant information. So that's, that person's in charge of. Some successes this past year that we've been able to book. The US Olympic National Weightlifting will be coming in February twenty nineteen. There's some stats in front of you. Again, all the hotel room nights, the direct spend that's there. Who knew Hot Wheels, there's a Hot Wheels convention. They'll be coming to DuPage County in April of next year. Fifteen hundred room nights, seven hundred thousand dollars in direct spend. So get your Hot Wheels out, attend the conference. Again, really trying to find those corporate meetings. We've got a Rockwell Sales Summit, and Westmont. We are hoping that we'll have the international, and there's a bullet that's missing, the Natatorium Project that's coming up. So we hope that that will continue to bring new sports business to DuPage County. So we switch from sales and go into marketing. We have a new brand, Do More DuPage. This is a sample of our digital ads, billboard ads. We really are trying to make sure that people are understanding that we're close to Chicago, but DuPage is enough tourism product to stand on our own. So this is an example of our brand, and we're very proud of it. We've been really able to expand our media efforts. Judy Sue from ABC Seven is our brand ambassador, and we've been able to get on her television show several times. We've been on WLS Radio. Actually, in September, we're gonna be having our annual meeting, and Judy's gonna be the moderator with some different experts on the tourism panel. So I'm sure you'll be all getting an invitation on that very soon. These are some of the partners. DuPage is rated the healthiest county in Illinois. So we've been able to really work with the Forest Preserve District to promote all of our trails and bikeways. The DuPage Health Department, Giving DuPage for volunteering, some of the hospitals. So we're gonna continue to grow that brand as the healthiest destination. So we went through a strategic plan this last year, because Chicago has really increased their inventory in hotel rooms. In the last three years, they've added more than six thousand hotel rooms to their inventory. Our hotels are struggling a little bit, in some cases. We're not seeing the compression that we used to when the big shows were in downtown Chicago. So we had a study done, and we're really, we are losing market share. We're doing well, but we could do better. So we're having a very comprehensive plan to make sure that we are becoming more competitive in the tourism world. And so we are creating a product development committee, which we've been, we've met twice. And that would include sports, and Evan has been gracious enough to serve on that sports committee. We really, in DuPage, believe it or not, we've got great facilities. I know we've worked with Todd many times, but we don't have that one anchor facility that we need. Right next door in Indiana, at Grand Park, they have eighteen baseball fields. We have to piece together Redmond and different baseball fields throughout to really create a real true tourism tournament. So we'll be working on trying to get everybody to give the Bureau one particular weekend where we can go out and sell a big, huge countywide event. So those are some of the things that will be going on. Even simple things like converting our grass fields to turf, where we can help maybe with some incentives on that, to help pay for some of that. We're hoping that, you know, we'll extend the season in Chicagoland, right? So also, I think this has been one of the true success stories in the last couple of years since I took over. If you happen to hop in a yellow cab leaving O'Hare, it's a city cab, and you come to Bensonville, you're assessed a fee. I get a little couple nods there, thank you.
Fair and a half, it's called.
There you go. So in 2010, a piece of legislation slipped by all of us. We weren't paying attention, we were asleep at the wheel. Thankfully, I wasn't the director at the time. And that assessment now helps Chicago and Rosemont with incentives and bid fee money, to the tune of a six million dollar slush fund. So what we did is our board got a little creative, and we created a pilot grant program. And so we're putting some money into this, and then when there's a piece of business that we're at risk of losing, we'll put in half the money, and we go to our communities, and we say, hey, we don't wanna lose this to Tinley Park, or to Indianapolis, or to St. Louis. What can we do? If two thousand dollars makes the difference, we'll put in a thousand. And if you could come in at a thousand, and we now have two thousand dollars to help transport them from O'Hare, or whatever the case may be. So that's been a really successful program. To the tune of nineteen thousand hotel rooms. Nine communities have taken advantage of that, with only a fifty-two thousand dollar contribution. So it's a small start, it's not six million dollars, but it is a start. And so we'll be going to the county in the next few months, saying, this is what we need to do to be competitive. So stay tuned for that. And of course, I wanted to talk about our really great success story, the American Hearing Impaired Hockey. Thank you to President DeSimone for, I think you made a bunch of people nervous not getting back here on time, but thank you for welcoming the group there. It was our pleasure to keep that in DuPage County. And of course, we have the Ice Skating Institute coming up in June next year as well. So we're really delighted to be working with Bensonville, just on some other future sports initiatives. So there's the one picture, I didn't have your daughter in that one, but I'll send that to you. And then one interesting piece of business that I think Bensonville, especially with the new hotel that came on board last Saturday, US Women's Championships. So while we did this sports study, the only true, unique facility, I shouldn't say that. We've got wonderful facilities, but what differentiates ourselves from any other Midwestern destination is our bowling center in Addison, Stardust Bowl, believe it or not. Eighty-four lanes, it's, there's no other facility like that, except probably Indianapolis has some of that. So we've been really able to go after bowling. In 2015, we hosted the youth tournament. That was about a sixteen thousand hotel room night tournament. This particular tournament will be coming in 2021. It's been hosted in Reno, Baton Rouge, Buffalo, New York, and we have the pleasure of hosting it in 2021. It will be for, I think the next slide gives a few stats on that. It's for a twelve-week period of time. There's going to be sixteen thousand competitors. It's kind of like the Ryder Cup of bowling, I guess I'll say. The average day, again, is four days, three point five nights, you've got an average spend there. And what I do like to boast about is, it's more rooms than the NFL Draft created in downtown Chicago. And just to give you a little comparison, everybody talks about Rockford, how Rockford has all these great facilities, and if you have kids, you probably traveled to Rockford for their basketball, or their soccer, or their baseball fields. They generate about ninety thousand rooms a year in sports business. This one tournament in DuPage will be roughly about half of those room nights. So that's a really big win for us. It's gonna require a lot of county, countywide effort. And again, we're glad to have Holiday and Express come on boards, because we'll be able to book some rooms in the two hotels in Bensonville, and possibly more in the future. So I also wanted to say, we got our community brochures in for Bensonville. I'm gonna be delivering them later on next week, right before the Fourth of July holiday. We're doing everything we can to help with social media. We're delighted to be here. I wanted to keep it as quick as possible, but I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have. We wanna keep working in partnership, and so I wanted to just make sure that I had an opportunity to say hi to everyone again, and thank you for your contribution and efforts, and keep up the good work in Bensonville.
Thank you for everything you do.
I will say, this is probably one of the more cost-effective programs that, or partnerships that we're involved in. We spend just a little bit over five thousand dollars a year, being a member of DuPage CVB. And just in the Hearing Impaired ICE alone, that was a twenty thousand dollar purchase for the ICE. So pretty cost-effective, wouldn't have been able to do it without Beth and her team. Todd and I both serve on the Sports Tourism Committee, is that, yeah, it's Committee? Commission, I don't know, bureaus, whatever. So no, it's a good partnership for us. I know one of this administration's focus is trying to become an amateur sports hub, and the only way to do that will be with the Commission Visitors Bureau's help.
Sounds like on our off days in 2021, we need to convert the ice rink to a bunch of bowling lanes.
I, I, thank you, Todd, and thank, Todd, and thank you, Evan, for, I forgot that you were on the committee as well, so thank you for that. We just, it's been a struggle in DuPage, because we have wonderful facilities, and yet, you know, our hotels are looking at us, help us bring in more business that we can't do on our own. And they, most of the hotels have a sales manager or a director of sales. And so sports is one area that, they don't go to the hotels. They look for the venue first, and then they need the hotels. So I know we've enjoyed a longstanding partnership with The Edge and all that you're doing, and Redmond Recreational Complex. So we're hoping that we can bring more and more amateur, amateur youth and professional sports. So I think a game changer would be if we can convert some of these grass to turf, if we can get some of these colleges and universities to dedicate a couple specific weekends where we're really feeling our hotels fill up, so anyway.
One of the things that Todd and I have learned on the committee is, you know, we have some gorgeous facilities, you know, Memorial Field, or even the West Edge Rink. Gorgeous facilities. The trend has now moved on to, it's not how pretty your facility is, it's how many of that do you have? So that's why, you know, eighteen baseball diamonds is important. We don't have that yet, so Beth and her team, we gotta try to package that together across the county, so we can get some bigger events here, which will be good.
I thought it was interesting that Game Day, now we're having a conversation, Game Day USA said, because we used to be able to piece things together and say, hey, it's only five miles apart, you know, ten minutes by car. And he said, my kids don't want to travel, they get done with their game, and then they wanna go walk to the next field and see the next game. So they don't wanna go from Bensonville to Addison to Elmhurst and so on. So that was a kind of eye-opener for us, because we keep going to these sports shows, and it's like throwing spaghetti against the wall if you don't have a bunch of different venues. So it was really interesting.
Yeah, it's been good.
Trustee Lomax and I are getting ready to drive nine hours to go watch baseball.
And spend your money elsewhere, we'd love to keep that here in town. So we've got a lot of work ahead of us.
Thanks again very much, and whatever we could do to help, we're in.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Let's, we'll move to a public comment. Does anyone wish to address the board? If so, please approach the podium and state your name. We do not have public comments, so public comments will be concluded at this time. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the June twelfth, two thousand and eighteen village board meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any modifications to the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries and minutes are approved. The next item for business is to approve the warrant in the amount of two million, thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred ninety-two dollars, fifty cents. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
You have a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the warrant? Please call the roll.
Uh, Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee, Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and the warrant is now approved. And on to the best part of the meeting. Will the deputy village clerk please read the ordinances and resolutions on the consent agenda that were discussed at the committee of the whole meeting?
Absolutely. Number one, an ordinance of the village of Bensonville, DuPage, Cook Counties, Illinois, ascertain the prevailing rate of wages for laborers, mechanics, and other workers employed on public works projects in the village of Bensonville. Number two, resolution approving a facility usage license agreement with Robert Morris University. Number three, an ordinance approving conditional use permit, electronic message center sign, and variance EMC sign percentage for Zion Evangelical Lutheran Church located eight sixty-five South Church Road. Number four, an ordinance approving conditional use permit, electronic message board sign, and variances monument sign height and number permitted, and wall signs number permitted for Amco Inc., located at one oh one West Irving Park Road. Number five, ordinance approving variance fence in the corner side yard for Celia Fernandez located at two oh two South Mason Street. Number six, resolution to pay the annual northeast DuPage Family and Youth Services contribution of twenty thousand dollars. Number seven, ordinance authorizing the donation of unclaimed personal property, bicycles currently in custody of the village of Bensonville Police Department. Number eight, ordinance amending Title V Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Chapter Two, Stopping, Standing, or Parking, Section thirteen, no parking zones, subsection F, no parking anytime to prohibit parking on the east side of Entry Drive from James Street to William Street. Number nine, resolution authorizing the execution of change order number two, final with RW Duttonman Company, for a decrease of three thousand, five hundred seventy dollars and fifty-one cents for the Downtown Streetscape Project North Half, a revised contract cost of two million, one hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars and forty-nine cents. Number ten, resolution authorizing the execution of change order number one, final, with Utility Dynamic Inc. for a decrease of four thousand, two hundred forty-eight dollars and ninety cents for the two thousand seventeen CDBG Annual Residential Streetlight Project, for a revised contract cost of one hundred eighty-three thousand, nine hundred ninety-two dollars and ten cents. Number eleven, resolution authorizing the final village participation cost for the contribution of the Elgin O'Hare Western Access Contract I dash fifteen dash forty-six forty-four, E zero two dash two R, in the not-to-exceed amount of three hundred forty-four thousand, seven hundred sixty-four dollars and ninety cents. Number twelve, ordinance approving an amendment to preliminary planned unit development and final planned unit development for Valenfest Holdings LLC, located at seven twenty East Green Street. Number thirteen, resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering service agreement with James J. Bennis and Associates Inc. for the two thousand and eighteen CDBG Annual Residential Streetlight Project, in the not-to-exceed amount of thirty-one thousand, three hundred sixty-nine dollars. Fourteen, resolution entering into a cross-improvement agreement with Metra as it relates to the Church Road TAP dash TCM project. Fifteen, resolution authorizing the execution of a local agency agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for grant funding associated with the Church Road Transportation Alternative Program Traffic Control Measure Project. Sixteen, resolution approving the donation of necessary right-of-way permanent and temporary easements for the benefit of the Church Road TAP dash TCM project. Seventeen, resolution authorizing appropriating the required local match funds in the amount of four hundred forty thousand, six hundred nine dollars for the Church Road Transportation Alternative Program Traffic Control Measure Project. Eighteen, resolution authorizing the purchase of an anti-ICE apparatus from Henderson Products Inc. as part of the tollways chloride reduction grant in a not-to-exceed amount of nineteen thousand, nine hundred eighty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents. Nineteen, resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with the Detroit Salt Company LLC for the purchase of five hundred tons of bulk rock salt in the not-to-exceed amount of thirty-three thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars. Twenty, resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Panoramic Landscaping for the Senior Disabled Grass Cutting Program. Twenty-one, resolution authorizing a supplement in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred three dollars for the Design Engineering Services with Robinson Engineering LTD for the Downtown Streetscape Project South Half, for a revised contract amount of two hundred forty-four thousand, two hundred seventy-five dollars. Twenty-two, resolution authorizing entering into a cost participation agreement in the not-to-exceed amount of fifty thousand dollars with Dayton Street LLC of Chicago, Illinois, to extend the public water main through a private property as part of the upcoming private development at ten fifty-five Sesame Street, Bensonville, Illinois. Twenty-three, resolution receiving a placing on file of the village of Bensonville Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and Management Letter for fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. Twenty-four, resolution approving a lobbying service agreement with Alfred G. Ronan LTD and the village of Bensonville. Twenty-five, resolution authorizing the payment of the DMMC Annual Membership Dues for two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen for the village of Bensonville. I can do it again, if you like.
No, no, thank you very much.
Is there a motion to approve the twenty-five resolutions and ordinances listed on the consent agenda, and as read by the deputy clerk?
So moved.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Uh, Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
The motion carries and the items on the consent agenda are approved. Moving on to reports of village departments. Resolution renewing and adopting the DuPage County Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan as an official plan of the village of Bensonville. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, we weren't able to make the consent agenda with this one, so, and it does have to be approved by July first, so we put it on the standing agenda. So Don, can you just give a brief overview, this is a one thirty-five-year update?
Correct. We are signatory to this plan since the beginning. This is an update to the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan that DuPage County writes. The majority of the communities in DuPage County participate in this. The effort is to coordinate projects related to some of the stormwater issues, so one project doesn't inadvertently or adversely affect another community. It helps bring grant money into the county and to the municipalities, and those types of things. So again, this is an update to that plan, and we have been signatory to it previously.
More of a housekeeping item, if you guys have any questions, we can answer them.
Any questions? There being a motion? There being a motion and a second, we have, we don't have any discussion, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. There are no reports for the Community and Economic Development Committee, or Finance, or the Police Department, or Public Works, or Recreation. So we're gonna move right on to the Presidential remarks. Car seats, we had our car seat giveaway this week, past weekend. I wanna thank everyone that came out to Public Works this last Saturday. It was our second giveaway, and as of Friday, we had eighty residents sign up to install the car seats free of charge. I want a special thanks to the Bensonville Chamber of Commerce, our corporate sponsors Bags Incorporated and Seven Hills Property. Joel, thank your crew for making that garage as clean as I've ever seen it, and we're gonna have a couple more. We have enough for a couple more.
We still got more, and also, let's thank the Fire Department for their installers.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you firemen and ladies for the installations. We had five installers, I believe?
Oh yeah.
Music in the Park, join us tomorrow for the third Music in the Park of the season, and we're gonna welcome a new group, Jersey Girls. Mark your calendars for Liberty Fest on the Fourth of July, starting at 10 a.m., 10 a.m. and going throughout the day. Parade leaves here at 10 a.m., right?
Yep.
And on our way to Redmond, that's always a good time. Public Works Open House is July 7th at 10 a.m., and it goes till 2:00. That's all I have for Presidential remarks. Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one more, I apologize. I have a proclamation of special recognition to the, oh, to, wait. Arbor Day. Arbor Day, Arbor Day. Did I lose it? Proclamation declaring July 7, 2018 Arbor Day in the Village of Bensonville. So I like to read the proclamation real quick. Arbor Day, Village of Bensonville proclamation, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, cool the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide a healthy habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our village increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas the village will host an Arbor Day Tree Dedication Ceremony on Saturday, July 7, 2018 at 11 a.m. at Redmond Park, which is across from the Public Works Facility as part of the Public Works Open House. Now, therefore, I, Frank DeSimone, Village President, and the Board of Trustees, do hereby proclaim July 7, 2018 as Arbor Day in the Village of Bensonville, and urge all citizens celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further, I encourage all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this future generations within our community, dated this 26th day of June, 2018. So is there a motion to support the proclamation?
A motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries and the proclamation has been approved. That concludes Presidential remarks. Do we have a Village Manager's report?
Yep, just some light housekeeping items. I sound like a broken record, but vehicle stickers via July 1st. The lines are pretty short, there's a $2 discount to buy it online, so that's encouraged. It's also a great time to pick up your dog tags, so if you've got a pet dog, make sure they're registered with the village, it's only $3. I also want to say that we, Chief Cosman, Mary DeSimone and I met with the Guatemalan consulate general on Friday, and we awarded them in a small ceremony the keys to the city to, as a example of our ongoing partnership between the Guatemalan residents in our community as well as the Village of Bensonville. So that was nice, and I think they're very honored to have received that. And then finally, we only have one meeting in July, July 17th, so that will be a combined Committee of the Whole as well as Board Meeting. That's all I have.
That's it. Do we have a Village Attorney's report?
I do not, Mr. President.
Is there any unfinished business to come before the Board tonight?